Yeah, you can use Terry's Corner or Smokey Point. Is that what they're counting on are those rider transfers and those dollars? I mean, that's the value to them. They're not, this isn't like, hey, let's be kind. This is, hey, there's some funding available. So, you know, just as we're looking for the best deals, so are they. That's, I think we need to not be too altruistic about the fact that they want cash.
Right. I think that's where we're having a problem getting collaboration and cooperation from the other bus services is because they're sitting back going, well, if we cooperate somewhere along the line, somebody's, because the end result is it should be easiest for this consumer. This, we're looking at, where you go about this, you know, you go, do I pay if I'm on the 411? Do I only pay if I'm going past the bridge? Do I have to do this, you know? It's that, and they're looking, well, if we cooperate, then they're going to get on with the transfer. We're not getting paid, but we're all these people around. It all comes down to, it's the same as anything else, all over money. You figure it all out because it's all about money. And I agree, the state, there needs to be a large umbrella over when you're talking regional transit.
Well, here's another, Rick, when you're talking about follow the money. I cannot drive a vehicle from Oak Harbor to Mount Vernon for $4. Can't do it unless I put a whole bunch of people in the car and meet. And you still have to drive that vehicle back. And, you know, I think instinctively, people, they vote by their wallet. They also make decisions based on their wallet. And we're still providing a very good subsidized system in all the transportation districts. I mean, that's a reason why people do it. Probably more for money than for convenience, but I think this is a big part of it. And just to segue into this thing, I kind of, I'm over in Wenatchee in that area often, and I had a chance to talk to some of the drivers. They charge everybody for riding their vehicles. Everybody, they have coin boxes, cash boxes. It's a buck and a half for the, for the local areas. And it's $2 to go, let's say, for example, the longer distance one, to Wenatchee. Everybody who gets on that bus, including paratransit, is paying. Seniors pay a discounted amount for the long routes. Everybody pays regardless of whether they're a veteran, disabled, whatever it is, everybody pays because the word given to me is, it's already a subsidized system to be running at that rate. If we were doing it for running on fares, we would be charging, as we know, we'd be charging big bucks for every ride, whatever you like to call it. And, and we may want to consider in our fare system as we're going into this policy that going, for example, from Oak Harbor to Marches Point, we have a standard fare. Everybody pays until we get into an electronic system where that electronic system is dovetailed in with Skagit and with Waukensoe so that, you know, whatever the discount fares are, it's going to be on your card for your student. At some point in a very near future, we have to get onto a fare collection system that is managing. From the driver's point of view, from the accounting point of view, and the electronic system will give us a profile of our ridership. In the meantime, if Wenatchee can do it, their link system, they can do it. I don't know why we have to re-drive, re- that week.
So, we're talking $200 to $280 a month for a five-day-a-week meter? If we have, if, if it requires a connection to another system?
Why, why don't more people use Vansor? That, I just don't understand it because if you're going to run this Everett connector and you've got 20 people on average, or 25 people on average that run it, that's four vans. You're telling me out of those 20 peoples, nobody's got a driver's license? It would be so much more convenient to have a van pool than to run this bus service down there.
And more cost effective?
It more cost effective, more convenient. The van pool makes us money. Well...
It doesn't because we don't charge...
It brings in revenue.
Fine, but it does, it still costs us more because we don't charge per mile the replacement cost of vehicle.
Well, that's where we'll get up, we'll get into that there. It's a subsidized system, but it makes, it's, it's more effective, more efficient than running a big bus. I just don't understand why more people are not using a van pool.
So, when that service was cut, or we're in that process, we, you know, trying to get the word out there for exactly that. And I, I don't, I wasn't a part of the results, but, you know, those people got to sign up for it. And I don't know how many extra van pools we signed up. Do you know that number?
I don't, but I think, I think part of the challenge is the van pools work really well when you have all the people in the van pool going to the same destination because it's easier to coordinate where you're going to meet. When there's different drop-offs, then you have to have, you know, whoever's driving has to be the last one. So, I think that's where the logistical challenges come in. And some people just don't want to get involved in, in that, you know? But we will promote it.
What about van pools to Terry's Corner? I mean, could, would, why couldn't you just do van pools to Terry's Corner and then they just start connecting from there?
Connecting on the bus?
Yeah, so that, I mean, and even for a bus, rather than running the bigger buses, what have we given thought to having smaller van pools or more frequent van pools? Or even, I mean, I think, I guess, still with drivers, but, but even with individuals driving to that Terry's Corner or to that Smokey Point location? And, I mean, that, then we're not having any of those big costs.
Yeah, so here's, then going from, so Terry's Corner, they do that. I've been there, I see the van pools parked there. And I couldn't tell you how many. I think the problem we would get into, we used to go into Smokey, to Smokey Point, that's where, you know, they're wanting to ride the bus.
Right.
You know, so it's a matter of getting those people interested in the van pool. You know, maybe it's more marketing resources or, you know, I don't, I don't really know, you know, what the, the problem is of people wanting to sign, what the challenges are.
That would certainly be something we could ask at our public hearings.
I was gonna say, it's public meetings, that would be a good thing because they're probably, people just don't, maybe they need to be better educated on the availability of a van pool and the ease and the, the financial benefits of it.
It might not be a bad idea for the, sometime for the van pool guys to sit down and have this conversation because they're the ones that deal with this all the time. I mean, I'm sure they can give you the answers that you're looking for.
They're actually in a promotional phase now with the new van pools coming on. So, it's, it's probably a good opportunity if we're going to go to public meetings. They have, already have some materials that they can share too, so maybe we'll see if they're willing.
And then, I'm sorry, then on option A and C where there's recommendation for more trips and what's being paid for by the state, I mean, what is the cost differential between running a van? A van is that commuter route that's smaller versus the full bus? I mean, can we have, can we run a smaller vehicle for that additional trip to control costs? That midday trip where we don't have as many riders? I don't know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you use? It's, it's to get, we're gonna get to the point where it sounds like Uber. Can you use a driver, a transit driver, to run the van pool?
I mean, would we get into ADA issues though? Because if we ran it like we would be running a bus, van pools don't have the lifts and the ADA...
But we have a paratransit for that. If some, we have paratransit for that, right? If somebody needs that. I'm talking about people that are making regular. What we're shooting for here is the people that are repeat customers, regular users of the bus that are commuting to work, that are commuting to school. If you've got people that are just going to shop, that maybe you're using it once a month or something like that, it might be cost effective to use, use it, send them a paratransit and send it out, but use the vans on a regular basis.
We don't use paratransit out of county right now, do we?
No.
So, what's the ADA issue?
Well, you may have persons with disabilities using a regular route, so you would need to use a vehicle that accommodates.
And if we used a bus that didn't, or a van that didn't have that, and we came across someone sitting there, say, in a wheelchair, we'd have to send the vehicle down that was equipped to, you know? How often does it happen? You just never know. Couple times a week and then all of a sudden it doesn't happen for a couple of months.
It might be, it might be cost effective to, I mean, those instances happen to send somebody.
Yeah. Rick, consider this, and Sean. If you have these peak riderships at each end of the day, why wouldn't you consider going down with your big buck bus? And you leave a vehicle overnight at a point, a termination point? And you come back with the small vehicle? In other words, you have a permanent vehicle that's going through. In the morning, the big vehicle goes down to point B, leaves it there, drives back on the less expensive vehicle, the cheaper to operate vehicle during the low ridership period. And then that one does a round trip, goes down and leaves it back there and comes back with the big ones during the peak times. So, you're, you're not having people drive around with empty buses. You're being more efficient with the vehicles that you have. It just means that a vehicle is parked. And, you know, the vehicles cost money when you're putting them on the road. You're going to have the overhead anyway with that vehicle, whether it's parked here, parked there, but you're using your drivers. You're paying them by the hour, so you're using that driver to switch his buses out.
No, I understand what you're saying. There's, there's many other issues that come in when you're doing that. You have to have a secure place to store the buses.
Right.
Somebody that's going to make sure that it doesn't become a temporary motel on wheels. You know, if people get into these coaches, I mean, you can lock them. You have to transport the operators back. When the coaches are coming in to lay over there or to stay there for a period of time...
Well, that, that driver going down with the big bus drives the little one back. And you're right about the security. I mean, those are the logistic things. I'm talking about logic right now, not talking about logistics.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm saying there's so much more to it. I mean, you can have a small vehicle there, but are there, how many are going to be laying over at that one's spot? How many?
Theoretically, I would say there's one. So, you're running in the morning during your peak time, loaded big bus, you park it at that secured location, but you already have a small bus already there, or whatever vehicle you're going to use. That one comes back and does the low ridership route, but ends up at the end of that shift or that, that day when you pick up that big bus riding back with a, with a load, a big load.
So, those are, you know, conversations we would have to get into with the other transit systems.
So, we have, would have a secure place to park the vehicle?
Right. So, I'm just thinking Everett Transit, one of the issues, so it obviously couldn't be at Everett Station because when we get there, when we left, they couldn't wait to get us out of there because they have space issues. And so, someone's actually using the bay that we used to use, so that'll be another conversation with Everett Transit of what bay are we going to be able to use? Because we're trying to get in there and meet the Sounder train just like everyone else.
Yeah.
So, those, you know, people can go on down to Seattle and wherever else they're going. So, that, that would be an issue just right there at Everett Station. And so, now you'd have to take the bus somewhere else besides that, so we would be, you know, charging more time. And then again, we have to have that conversation. I mean, we've never had the conversation.
Well, that's a conversation I think that we can at least consider. We don't need to drive empty buses around, but we know that during the day, there is very low ridership. And, and I cannot imagine that other transit agencies balance out their ridership vehicles, the size of vehicles they put in. And, and, you know, I know it sounds tranquil. Wenatchee, Wenatchee uses these small vehicles. They are, I have a, I have a photo of it in my phone. But they use those small vehicles. They're a little bit smaller now, as they're real high, they have the, the disability, you know, the disability lifts in them and stuff like that. And they use those for their paratransit and for their very low ridership routes. Because, and they're kind of like us in many ways where they have long distances, low ridership issues. But they've managed to work that out and match the size of the vehicle with the area that they're servicing based on mileage and ridership to cut down on the cost.
So, if I were to jump us ahead a little bit based on some of the conversations we had now and the public, public meeting process, is it, I mean, there's some relationship questions that have to get answered. We can give the community, for example, option B, and they may overwhelmingly say, yeah, we like option B, but we need our partners to agree that option B is feasible. Do we work out these issues and questions prior to the public meetings? Or do we go to the public meetings, get the feedback, and then pursue their preferred option?
I would like to get as many answers as possible before going into those meetings. And that's, that's why I'm holding meetings with community transit now to flush through all of these Smokey Point issues. And there, and there are probably other issues too that we need to discuss relative to overlapping services, but, no, I want to have, I want to get as many answers as we possibly can get on, on all of these options and van pools and anything else that we have.
So, so we have a ways, I mean, we have a, we have a ways to go before we schedule these community public meetings then? Because we need to get answers on three different options unless there's an option the board knows right now and wants to take off the table. But, but we need to know what's realistic and feasible. If those, if option B doesn't pencil out, then we have two options only that we're taking to the public. So, we need to, so I guess I'm kind of asking in terms of sequencing, you know, we're acting like some decision has been made, but we haven't, we haven't had our public process, certainly haven't made any decisions. And we don't even know of those options, which three are viable at this point?
That's right. And we're not making a recommendation because we still have some of those open questions and because we don't have the input.
Right.
We're still in the development stage.
And then some of the things that came up, I mean, so I've moved past this because I thought we talked about it, sorry. So, some of the things that came up in the employee meeting was the fleet, like if there's enough fleet capacity to take on the 412 run. So, in our conversations, we're talking about a big bus and then potentially a small bus. So, that'd be two, I don't, we haven't had a conversation about, about fleet readiness. We've talked about fare boxes. There's still some concern around driver safety because we're doing the cash box process. And so, I think we're going to need to really understand that concern and ensure we have clear process in place. Also, what if we have a non-payer? What that looks like? Make sure that we allow enough time for training. And then the other question I'm going to have about the whole system is the startup costs, right? We're going to print out flyers that say, this is the route if we make this decision. This is the route, this is the expect, you know, this is the fare. We're going to train bus drivers on that route. We're going to get everybody ready to go. But it's, but we're making a decision based on some grant funding. If that grant funding goes away, is the startup cost that we're putting into this worth the amount of time that we can deliver this run? Or are we committing to this run beyond grant funds? You see what I'm saying here? Okay. I got some more questions still.
Keep talking.
Well, that's it. I mean, that, I mean, that's kind, I mean, and before we, because I was all in on, let's do the 412 at least because of the grant money. But I want to make sure that that grant money is really covering the cost of what this is and we're not just making a decision because the funding's banked out there. And we're able to make this decision with our fleet.
Mr. Chairman, I, Jill, I, I think you're right on as far as the, the longer term, the longer term issue. Making decisions now to implement a service you take advantage of available, of available application, but we don't know if it's going to be continued. And yes, we do have to put some money into, into labor and infrastructure to accommodate fares. That's just the nature of the beast. If the service is not continued or we don't collect fares in the future on, on the island or anywhere else in the system, that's a, an expenditure that, you know, that was provided for a year or two, but not a long-term solution. There are, yeah, there are costs for us to get this thing started, no question. It's almost a people favorite, so to speak, in terms of, you know, hoping and assuming the service will continue. And right now, the only way to, to assure the service is continued is that we maintain our financial stability and are able to provide the service ourselves, but that certainly isn't assured at this point.
Me and Paul took a trip last week and went up to Skagit and Waukensoe, and they gave us a tour of their, their vault facility where they dump the, the money at and how they collect it and what the process was as far as the LUMUS or either Armored America, they picking the money up. Certain ones count the money for them, other ones they have to have extra people to count the money. Some do it a couple of times a week, some do it three times a week. But the one thing that I saw with them is that they have the electronic boxes, and so they put a probe on that box when it comes in and it downloads all the ridership information. So, it's telling you how much money should be in that box so they can use that to reconcile. With our current system, it would be a cash counting, you know? We, we would have to match those boxes up with the bus itself, maybe have those labeled with the bus, but it wouldn't give us automatic information. So, that's something else.
And that may be one of the reasons why we want to have one standard fare until you have an electronic system that sorts out the discounted fares. At least it gets us started in a, in some kind of a system.
I would think a little...
Excuse me, Rick. Lance had a question.
Yes. I think startup costs are always, in a lot of cases, more than eventually it turns out, once the system gets up and running. As Sean was referring to, the fare boxes, those electronic ones, I think we've got information there, $15,000 each. You know, that and recapturing the, the ridership, things, believe it or not, in this, in this business, if you will, things change over time, you know? I mean, I remember when we used to have to hitch up the horses to the stagecoach.
You remember that? So, you doing that, I was on that one.
Yeah, things have changed and, and it will, and we will, the startup will look back and go, goodness sakes, had we thought of that then? Well, the reason we couldn't afford it at that time, you know? So, I, I understand what all the concerns are. I think we'll persevere and do the best we can and learn from whatever, God help us, mistakes we make.
And I was writing that, I was writing shotgun on that stagecoach, too.
You had hair then. You had hair back then.
Yeah.
Have we determined any kind of timeline here about when we would like to have this? Get all the information we possibly can and...
That's what we have.
Okay.
Let's move this along.
Well, my cats.
Yeah, just real quick here, like, okay, stars, I thought that Skagit had offered us the, the services with their armored truck, fare boxes, all that stuff, right? We're looking at starting out with a keep it simple system here, right? $2 a person is, and when you're sitting there and you're talking about, oh, well, the disabled or the elderly or the this or the veterans or what? Most of the people that are going to use this service are either going to work or going to school, they can afford to pay a fare. Okay? It's cut and dry as that. A couple of, though, the safety of the drivers that when we look at this thing, that's got to be paramount. And that was one of the concerns I heard Saturday as well. And there's going to have to be a policy procedure for people that don't pay, don't do this. Like I said, they're, well, community transit has a sign that says, you know, this is what fare is by law and has all the lyrics to it. You point to that and they, don't, don't confront them. However, we do, it needs to be a written policy. But I also heard when you're talking about different options, drivers don't like option B is what I heard Saturday. Okay? Just with the Smokey Point, because you're looking and they're looking at having to transfer, then they're looking at having to pay again, et cetera, et cetera. I think we need to keep this simple. We're going to do it, we're running an express service from Mayan Oak, or Terry's Corner, whatever the case is, to Everett and back, an express service, two times in the morning for peak times, two times in the afternoon for peak times. The other thing I want to make sure that is understood is that this grant we're receiving is not meant to cover 100% of the cost of this system if we go back to a 412. It's meant to subsidize it the same way as the 411 grant or, or funding is a subsidy. Island transit is supposed to have some skin in the game too, and I think we should have the public have some skin in the game. But on that, deal with that subsidy, not just for the 411, but the 411 also, I think it might be a good idea to have, see if when we have these public meetings, if we can't have our state representatives there, maybe give us a, if nothing else, they can feel the community concerned that they can relate to Olympia and maybe we can get some reassurance out of them that they are going to back us in the future for future regional mobility granting of funds.
So, I think a lot of what you said is fully a very good point, but I did need to clarify one thing, which is the 411 more than pays for itself. So, the 411 actually gives us cost for administration and all of the administrative costs. So, that, so that, we're not subsidizing that grant, the 411 actually helps subsidize that. The 412 is a different situation and, and this was, I mean, this is partly why we need to have this public hearing is if these grants go away, the costs of the fares that we're charging do not pay for these systems. So, just because these, the community may be paying fares, doesn't mean that there's a guarantee that these routes will continue unless there's, there is a grant from the state that subsidizes these regional connections.
Right.
And so, I think that needs to be part of our public conversation. And I also understand what you're saying about startup costs. I think what's, it's just, it's a business thing versus a government thing for me, maybe, that's hard, is that in business, when you make an investment in infrastructure, staffing or training, you can, you understand your return on investment. We understand our return on investment, but we just can't control that return because it's tied to the state. And so, and I think that that's what's getting challenging is that we have one more legislative cycle and then drama starts again. And so, I'm sitting here looking at how much work this takes and conversation this takes, and I'm not opposed to it at all. I think that we need to really look at it for these regional connector routes. But again, it comes down to that challenge for the state, which is there's a lot of hidden costs to this organization to go through this process of outreach, staff training, policy development, et cetera. And we're not guaranteed revenue that's going to continue these routes in the future. I mean, that just is, I don't under, I just don't get the government sometimes. This just doesn't make sense.
Let me step in on, are you finished?
I'm, I'm on to the beginning.
Sean, I want to talk to you a little bit about the rotating of vehicles. Again, one of the other agencies, they pull smaller vehicles off, as I said earlier, to do the low ridership routes. Would we be able to have a driver take a large coach during peak time? Say you have, you have two, you have one morning peak time or you have two morning peak times?
Probably two.
Two morning peak times, two afternoon peak times. So, then if you have that driver going down doing the morning, two, two vehicles, or is it the same bus that does two trips or do you have two buses on the road?
Two buses.
Two buses, okay. So, now you have two buses. So, then can you schedule the smaller buses that you're going to leave at the destination station, come back and, and also do routes in that area and then for a fixed route? But then at a certain time when they, those drivers have to take their large coaches to head down or come back? Can you rotate things like that where you can use the same bus, the little bus for your routes, pull them off of that, that low ridership period? I mean, I know it's convenient, but if you're only riding six or eight or four people or something like that, it just doesn't make any sense to do that.
Yeah, so we can rotate our buses however we need to rotate them as long as they're logistically correct for that schedule.
Right.
So right now on Cameno, there's no, um, big buses at all. So bringing this back with them, you know, we would have to send the bigger bus over there. So we'd have to look at that being, um, a standalone shift, possibly a split shift. We could, you know, when that bus is back or, you know, we'd have to figure out, you know, the situation of leaving at that. Part I'm not sure on, um, just say you could. So what happens is then you, you need two buses, so actually four more buses for those. And one of the issues I did hear someone bring up and I knew that would come up in the, in the meetings is that we are very short on buses at this time until we get our fleet where it needs to be. And we've, we've gotten rid of quite a few and so that's one of the concerns from dispatch, you know? At least once a week I get an email saying, you know, we're doing the best we can, we just don't have the buses. And so they're even concerned about the 412, you know, how are we gonna do that? So it's just something we'll have to look at operationally and report back to you.
Okay. So even if you're sending two buses down, let's say you have one small vehicle down there. The driver, both drivers ride back on the small bus, for example, and they're taking some riders along the way to bring that driver back to do a local fixed route until they are scheduled to go back on and to get back down to that, that other point, point B, whether it's Smoky Point or Everett. Then, then you have this transportation link in there running smaller, cheaper vehicles, cheaper to operate and stuff like that. So logically, it sounds like it would work, the logistics is the security of the vehicle now. And then for Ken, shouldn't we have a community meeting to invite people to a central location, let's say the Coupeville?
Rec Hall.
Rec Hall type of thing and, and we have a legislator there, we have a DOT person there, we have our staff there. And, you know, we probably have to have a couple of meetings, but people are gonna have to come to the meeting if they want to. Or you may have to have one here and one on Cameno or, you know, something like that. I think we have to have the other players in the game at these meetings too.
I agree. I don't know that that's going to help us in our, in our short-term decisions. But I think that's, that's critical.
But having a Skagit and a Community Transit Milwaukee person at the meeting also. And we may even have to go to their area. I, it's, this com, this complex thing of having individual transit districts and trying to be a regional facility. Too many losses.
And that's one of the things we have on the, further in the slide is we have the public meetings for you guys to consider how you want that to look. And we figured a couple on WIBB, you know, a couple on Cameno. Just hearing you say that, I know Dave Hayes has been to a couple of meetings. That'd probably be, you know, a real good idea if we're talking about this 412 service. Just so he knows, you know, the challenges that we face with what they're giving us. And then the public hearing as well, which we threw out a date out there for February the eighth at the next board workshop. If we were able to get meetings in at that time, just, you know.
I think a public hearing for February eighth is too soon.
Yeah, that's, that's very optimistic.
And we need to hear the results back from some of these relationship conversations and our, our questions. I know that the, I mean, I was surprised to hear Rick say that, that the Cameno drivers had a preference on options because in our meeting, it didn't seem like anybody even knew there were options. They, they really didn't know the status of where we were at. So I don't think that the drivers have seen all the options. We haven't gotten feedback from them regarding concerns about those specific three areas, three choices that we have. So I think that the, the board needs to have a greater understanding of all the ramifications before it goes to the community meetings personally. And then I, so I, you know, um, it's, it's not that I wanna prolong this process, but I do, I don't wanna start it and then, and then have a lot of unknowns.
So the, the staff here wouldn't, they wouldn't really necessarily know a lot about the options cause it's almost two separate entities. We're a team. But the folks on Cameno, they will have reasons as to, they deal with the passengers. They know what, where those passengers were going and so they'll have input on Smoky Point or any one of those options.
Yeah, that makes sense. I should have thought.
I, I, I think it is a good idea to have a, a big, large staff meeting and let them bet, you know, bet this a little bit before we go to a public hearing.
Yeah. One, one of the things I heard from the drivers on, on Cameno or from, from the employees on Cameno was that, and, and I agree, that they know best what is gonna be most effective. Cause they're dealing with it day by day and actually out there doing it. And I think that their opinion and their, their input is critical. And, um, I, I know the question came up, they were after, they asked you, well, what do you think fares were gonna be implemented? I says, if we went together to this, this meeting here and said today, yes, we're doing this and go ahead for it. If you sit back and look at the times and forecast out how much time you have to have to advertise meetings for the public, then to advertise a public hearing and to hold the public hearing and to actually have a go-to vote. Realistically, if we decided today to make this a go, to get it in place by late June, would be somewhere in the ballpark. Because you gotta install equipment, you've gotta put on public notice, you've gotta, I mean, there's a lot of steps that have to go. So it's nothing that's gonna happen overnight and as much as I wish it could happen overnight, I know it's not going to.
And then we're, I want, we're considering public hearings on Route 412 and 411. And those are the only routes at this stage that we're entertaining as a board for, uh, for potential fares. Is we're gonna, we're, we're considering public hearings on 412 and 411.
That's right.
I just wanted to make sure that we, that we were, that we have, I mean, we had a presentation from folks, but we actually haven't said that that's where we're at.
But that's my idea and it, it only makes sense because that's our high-cost run. That the express service from Cameno to Mount Vernon, from Cameno to Everett, from Oak Harbor to Marches Point. Those are our high-cost runs. Anything that goes out of county.
And we're not having public hearing, we're considering this time fares on in-counting routes.
Correct. My understanding.
I'm not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
Cause there was some misunderstanding at least.
No, I think this is something that needs to be done incrementally and that's, that's a whole different animal.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the one page that I think needs to be filled for me is, for me, everything starts with a schedule. And staff understands what some of the challenges are in putting a schedule. Ken, I think, you know, your tenure here has a timeline. And I would really like to have the guts of this thing put together while you are still with us in that capacity. Cause transitioning to a new person, there's gonna be a lot of, of steep learning curves for that person. So I would like for this board to give Ken direction to prepare a schedule about our public meetings, even if we have to have additional meetings, that says this is, this is the date that we want to have this decision made. And then you work back from there about how we're going to put this together to the public and make the decision. I think that if we don't have that, we are going to drift along and it'll end up being end of June or something like that. So, does that make sense to the board?
Yeah, I just don't wanna rush it till we there.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think we have to rush it. I think we have to manage, to manage the time.
Yeah, the, um, purpose of presenting the general dates that we presented here was, um, you know, the February meeting and, um, the, the public meetings in the interim was to, um, provide a best-case scenario in terms of as soon as possible. Looking at maybe a March first or April first date. This is, this is what we have to do to reach a March first or April first date, probably April first. So I think for my purposes with scheduling what needs to be done, I think I would like to request a reasonable date, the, uh, board feels is appropriate as a implementation date that we can work back from. We would, I was thinking April first.
Well, I, I don't, I think that picking an implementation date is a step too far. I'm not gonna pick an implementation date, I'm, I'm going to pick a decision date.
Decision date.
But to pick an implementation date presupposes we've made a decision, right? So then, so I would say, I mean, my personal preference is I don't think we can have a public hearing until the first part of March. We have a public hearing February eighth, we're three weeks out from that. So I'd say we're at first part of March for, for a public hearing with the board. That allows us a month to do community outreach, well, six weeks to do community outreach, get some of the decisions back from our partner agencies. But there's no way we're gonna pull all that information together in three weeks.
You need ten days lead time to give, to schedule a public hearing.
Yeah, we gotta, that's not even enough time for this community to got.
It has to be, it has to be published within days in advance, please. So.
Well, it comes down to we need a schedule. We did, we want, we want a decision date before, uh, you are not any longer the interim executive director and we work backwards from there.
So we have it in March, our board meeting in March?
Mid, mid-March. I mean, use every, every opportunity that we have to schedule meetings and we may have to have special meetings too.
I was just wondering, what, uh, what is the requirement that the, that the, uh, change goes in where people pay a fare? Is that in 2016 or by 2017? What is it exactly?
The schedule for when, I'm sorry, Lance.
When is it required that Island Transit begin collecting fares? Is it in this year or next year?
There's not a, it, it's not date-specific, it's specific to when we begin service on, on 412.
Okay.
So that date, whenever, it could be April first, it could be August first. But the funding for that service doesn't happen until we give a, until we actually begin collecting fares on that service.
We cannot collect money from, from the grants until we have a system in place. Then we get compensated for doing it.
I see. Yeah. I think everybody's right in being cautious. If we try to rush it too soon, you know, we'll be fumbling around. And I know that Ken, with your time, that you'll be with us, it's critically important that you all to see this. But it's also, I think, important to understand that if this begins, for example, late spring, early summer, you're not gonna get a true indication of what the ridership is.
That's true.
Right. There's so many people on vacation in the summer. Until the summer's over with and then you get the full strength of the commuters that'll be available to take partner service. And, uh, you know, it, and also we might consider beginning that service without charging any fares for a period of time. For example, maybe four or six weeks to get people educated that the fares will be implemented as of hypothetical date, uh, September first or after Labor Day or something, just to prepare them. And, and also during that period of time to bring whoever is selected to be the new CEO onboard and understand what all is going on. I got no more.
Uh, Paul? Do we, and Ken, do we have to show, uh, eight percent, uh, margin on fare collection to receive? Is that a condition of receiving any money from, from the state for the 411? We have to actually show that that's what we're doing or is that gonna be a historical thing like a year from now in the mod?
I, I think with, from my brief conversations with any state officials, I think it's, applies to 412 and perhaps only a 412. Uh, it's not a condition of 411. And I don't know about the timeframe on it, but I think that if you wanted to work with us on that.
So that's. If we committed and there is a, a commitment from the board.
Yeah.
I think they would put along with that.
See, like Lance said, you're gonna have these peaks and valleys in ridership because of the season. But also startup of a system is probably gonna have some variations in ridership there to, to really get an accurate measure of what's really happening.
If we charge the two dollar fare, which is consistent with our region, and we don't hit the eight percent return, are we not eligible for the grant?
Or do we have to pay it back?
I don't know that that will be.
Well, we should know that before we start.
I would like to know that. I don't wanna make the decision to go ahead and do it only to find out after we've made the decision, we can't make the eight percent. Now we have to give the money back that, cause it may be a condition of the grant.
Yeah, it seems to just be at risk.
Yeah. All right. We ready to move this along?
Yeah.
Um, you wanna finish the presentation or if we?
So I think we, we jumped around and we covered, uh, most of the things. One of the things I'd like to point out is this sheet is given separate. And Paul put some numbers together that you guys will wanna review, um, concerning the cost of the routes and running routes. So that's a little more detailed than the three options. That sheet was.